I don't have a. Do I need audio?
Maybe we'll be joining you with audio only this evening.
All right. Hello and good evening and welcome to the May 21st, 2024 Grade Presenting Presentation School Board Workshop for the Apocentumic School District. My name's Michelle Wall and I'm glad that you can join us tonight. Those of you in the room and those of you who are joining us on Zoom and those of you who will tune in later to the recorded version of all of us. We're going to start this workshop like we do all of our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'll please join me.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Dr. Burrows, who is running the presentation this evening?
Who's running the presentation this morning or this evening?
Yes.
We'll start off with Dr. Feathers and Dr. Robinson and then it'll be turned over to Mr. Hoover and Dr. Conley.
The floor is yours. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having us. Good evening, everyone. I'm Rebecca Feathers, the Director of Elementary Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. I'm also here with our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Gina Robinson, and with our ELA Coordinator for the School District at the elementary level, Ms. Annie Davis. And we're here to share with you some updates with our elementary grading. Ms. Davis is going to start us off.
Thank you for having me. I'm really excited to share our year two implementation of our standards-based grading and reporting. One thing I wanted to talk about was that all of our report cards reflect standards-based language and are consistent across all grade levels. That would be in all four content areas. We also have skills for successful learners and related arts. We do use a four-point scale to measure progress within our standards. Our four stands for consistently demonstrating the standard, a three is progressing towards the standard, a two is inconsistently demonstrating the standard, and four, I mean, a one is not yet. Our progress is shared four times per year with parents with our report card. We have four marking periods. One thing we did add this year were standard-aligned coverage sheets that go with each assessment that teachers give. So that teacher, parents are getting updates about their students' progress throughout the year, not just those four times a year for marking period report card conferences. We also have professional learning for our teachers. We have our professional learning days and we have worked with our newer teachers on the standards-based grading. As well as our instructional coaches have been working with our teachers during PLCs to utilize, how to utilize reports to dig deeper into how students are doing and how to inform their instruction. We also have guidance documents that are provided to teachers and parents. One of them is on our website, Standards-Based Grading, Frequently Asked Questions. And we also have our elementary grading guidelines for elementary families, Spanish literacy and Chinese literacy. And it's really just a good understanding of our key vocabulary that's found in the Common Core State Standards and the Next Generation Science Standards and also our Delaware Social Studies Anchor Standards.
So like Ms. Davis said, we're excited that we're in year two of implementation, so there hasn't been many changes since year one. However, we're always looking to review and revise, take feedback and keep on the work. So we do have a grading committee and we gather annually to meet and to discuss standards-based grading and also to identify the next steps for our professional learning. So starting now in the spring and through the summer, we will engage in review and revisions. And that has to do with a couple areas of standards-based grading. We provide a scope and sequence for all of our teachers, for all of our content areas. The team will review those at each content level and update them accordingly for the 24-25 school year. We also review our assessment guides and our platform for grading, which is called Forefront. Make sure that the assessments are updated there for the school year as well. We'll review our companion that Annie was talking about for our teachers and parents to see if there's any additional information or revisions that are needed prior to the start of the school year. And also the website, we make sure that is reviewed and updated as well. And like Ms. Davis said, we're always engaging in professional learning around standards-based grading and our processes. So we will continue to schedule professional learning and engage our teachers in professional learning. Those are really our updates. Any questions from the board?
Are there any questions from the board on the elementary grading? Mr. Forston, do you have any questions?
I don't know that I have any questions other than you have, and you can provide it to us after this meeting. A, I'll say before and after what the report card would have looked like under the old system, what it looks like under the new system. Does it look exactly the same and it's just the way you calculate the grades that's different?
It's the, we've been using the same report card for two years now, so it's, there's no changes at this time to the report card.
Do you mean previous to the two years?
Well, I would say, yeah, I mean, before we, I'm just curious what it looked like before we implemented these standards versus now. That's what I was getting at.
We can find some old ones, I'm sure, and provide those. I believe we did that a couple of years ago when we were looking to move fully to standards-based. But I don't have that available with us right now.
We can get it for you.
That would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Moving on, the next portion of the update will be the secondary grading. Mr. Hoover.
Good evening, everybody. We are actually going to do our presentation from the front because we have a whole slew of people who are going to help support us here. So my name is Nick Hoover. I'm the Director of Secondary Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. And we're here to present our secondary grading update. Just to let you know what, a little bit of what you're going to see, we have some revisions tonight. Those revisions have gone through our portfolio work group. We have our field testers as well as our secondary grading committee. And what's important about that is that this is not, these aren't recommendations from one, two, or three people or four. But what that, what those groups entail in terms of stakeholders are, we have our teachers, our counselors, student services, building administrators, district administrators, union leadership. All of these areas are represented, represented on these committees. So I think that's important. The other piece that I think is important as well is all seven of our secondary schools. And every single content area is also covered in one of those three groups. So these revisions went through all of these groups and actually started from, started from these groups through our secondary grading committee. So the first slide here is just to talk about the revisions. There's really two revisions. One is a small one and one's is a large one. The small one is we're looking to make some language clarification. We're going from everyday evidence to evidence of learning. The purpose around that is just to alleviate some of the pressure of the term everyday, right? Folks thinking that that has to happen every single day. Evidence of learning is not an everyday type of thing. The big revision that we're, we're working on or making is a delay in the full-scale implementation. So if you remember way back, we had a five-year plan that was actually a six-year plan because we had a year zero. As part of that five-year plan, full implementation of portfolios was to begin in the 24-25 school year, so this fall. What we're looking to do is delay that out for another year, '25-'26. Some of the purposes for the groups coming together to say, let's delay this for a year. We wanted some more professional development for all of our staff, communication to families, communication to staff as well. Another tie-in there, for those of you who know, our statewide system, grading system, attendance and grading system called e-School. The state is moving to a new system called Infinite Campus, and that's also going to happen in '25-'26. So rather than making changes in an old system for next year and then having to, you know, adjust to the new system, those would be happening simultaneously. We're going to see some of those communication plans and PD plans here in just a second. Dr. Conley.
Good evening. So Mr. Hoover shared with us the revisions. And on this slide, I'm going to talk to you about the continuation of the work that we are currently working on. So this year in our secondary grading system, the summative to formative weighting is at an 80-20%. So 80% of a student's grade is based on their summative work and 20% is based on their formative work. And so we will be continuing that as we move toward the pilot. The other piece is, in our initial plan, we talked about the fact that non-academic behaviors would be reported on the report card separately and independently of the grade. And we are continuing with that work with the report card comments that staff are able to provide to students and their families on the report card. And we'll continue to work towards how that looks in the portfolio rollout, as well as with the new infinite campus, what we'll be able to communicate to families that way. So we'll continue with the current system of reporting those non-academic behaviors on the report card in the way that we currently do it this school year. And then we will continue with the piloting of this portfolio process. Over the last two years, we have been able to grow the number of teachers that are voluntarily piloting this system. This year, over 60 teachers in our secondary schools are piloting it, which is triple the amount of teachers that piloted, piloted it in the previous school year. And we look to continue to grow those numbers as well. So being able to pilot what this system looks like, whether it's a large scale across entire departments or within the PLC level. So teachers that teach common content or common grade bands has been really valuable and been able to give us a lot of feedback about how we can continue to refine this from a communication standpoint to our families and our students, as well as to, with the professional learning needs that our staff have, you know, made clear that we need to provide. So when we're continuing this work in these three buckets, it really will be kind of similar to how we're doing it this year with the work that we're doing.
Oh, I was going to say next side, Steve. I thought I had a chance. So as part of this, oh, I'm Kevin, instructional media, so I'm on Steve's team and I'm helping out with the portfolio work as well. Part of our professional learning plan is a summer workshop or bootcamp that we're going to offer July 22nd through the 25th. That is an open call and invite to anyone in our schools that are involved on the instructional side. From people in the current work to people who are just curious about the work but want to be a part of it. And that includes anyone that's instructional-facing, so teachers, paras, coaches, administrators, specialists, coordinators. And the idea is we get a team together there and we begin some of the practical implementation stuff. We take some of the shining moments that you're going to hear from tonight from the teachers in the room. And we start to build those out for people who want to take that first step into this world. Part of that work is going to be continuing our cross-district work as we work in PLCs during the, during the following school year. Much of that work will be designed based on what gets done during that bootcamp. We're going to make that a thematic approach in terms of, these are things identified during that either work group, oh, sorry, work bootcamp. I'm confusing the two words. During that bootcamp and then we're going to continue that go throughout the rest of the year. Part of that concludes that job-embedded PD, which is our ongoing PD practices that we're currently doing. And then part of that end result is throughout next year, we're going to work on developing and implementing a library for people. So as people begin and look for resources and research, and this will be both research items, but also practical district examples of the work. So if people have questions or they want to see what it looks like in an Apo classroom, we'll have that library available as well. And then the communication plan will begin to ramp up. Obviously, the initial plan will go out very soon after this to communicate to both staff and families. And then based on feedback we get and as we continue this process, we'll continue ongoing feedback. And the idea is that feedback and communication will occur both from the district, the buildings, and teachers as we continue this process throughout the next school year.
Before, before the teacher shouts, I just have some questions. We often get questions from parents. And so some of my questions are from parents. Who knew we're having this workshop? If you have a child who's in a class that is one of the, what did you call it?
Piloting or field testing, either one.
Yes. So are parents informed of that at the start of the school year? Like as part of the syllabus for the year, they know they're part of the pilot program?
It may or may not have been in the syllabus depending upon when they started it. So it could have been in the syllabus language if they started it right away. Because some classrooms and some of the teachers in here can attest to that, so it would have gone home in the syllabus language if they were doing it all year. Or it was something that they were implementing later, like at the second or third marking period, and there would have been a letter that was able to go home at that time. And that was a letter that would have been from Mr. Hoover, I believe. That was the letter that you filled out? Yeah, that was the letter that would have gone from Mr. Hoover at that time to say they were field testing at that time. And it was dated from the beginning of the year, but they could have used it at any point in the year.
And then my other question, which I have a couple more after you guys are done, because they might be addressed. But if we hear from a parent who has a child in a class where they're part of the pilot program and they feel like the grading is inconsistent with what they know as an educator to be consistent. Usually when someone calls me, I am familiar with referring to the chain of the command. Like, you know, you talk to the teacher, then you talk to the principal, and then we escalate things. What's the best chain of command if parents have concerns about portfolio grading?
It's actually the same chain of command. It would be talk to the teacher, then talk to the teacher, talk to the administrator, if that's going nowhere. Generally, they get directed to me because I'm usually the one that's talking to the field testers. If that doesn't resolve it, then it usually goes to Mr. Hoover or back through the chain of command again. I can't say that it's gone anywhere outside of that because usually it's resolved in that instance. I'm trying to think if there's any other scenarios that have played out that haven't been resolved, either going through myself and/or Mr. Hoover and back again. I know there have been a few, but you have those with any grading circumstance. I mean, because that's happened with the traditional grading system as well as the portfolio grading system. And there's still been learning curves because part of the problem has been pushing what we're doing with the portfolio lens into what we're doing with the 80-20 platform. Like that has been part of the problem and part of the hiccups with the field testing. And I do have a couple of teachers that I know would speak to that tonight if you wanted to talk to them about that.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure that I'm representing, you know, people who ask me questions.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Please continue, unless somebody else from the board has a question at this time.
Yeah, I have, I wanted to, this might not be the right time to ask this question. You may be addressing it or maybe one of the other presentations. There's only, I mean, if there's one thing that I hear from parents and from students and even from a few teachers about grading, no one, at least no one who has spoken to me, has anything good to say about retests. I mean, I can't count on one hand the number of people who have said that. Nobody seems to like that, that method or that process. I don't know when the right time is to ask that question, but I'd like to hear it addressed.
Sure. You, you might hear some of that tonight, but I can share, and I might have said this to you before, Mr. Forston, over the last few years. But it's rare that somebody's going to reach out to you and say, boy, you know what? I just love those retakes. But that's kind of the, I, I mean, I feel that's the case in anything. I get feedback surveys from Walmart and I never fill it out until the one time I had a bad experience and I filled it out. So I, I do think there's positive experiences out there. Dr. Harrison made a comment to me at one point a couple of weeks ago where she said, there's so many people who are field testing and the families don't even know it. Because everything is going smoothly and it's working out well and the kids are learning and there's no complaints, so nobody even knows. The parents don't know, they don't contact you, right? So I, I would say that when you say nobody has reached out to you on a positive, that's unfortunately, I think, a lot of times you hear the, the negative and you don't hear the positive. Tonight, we're ours, we are going to hear some positives, but we're not hiding anything either. The teachers are going to talk about some of the things that they're struggling with right now as well. So, yeah, I mean, I don't know if that answers your question, but it's my response.
Well, now, look, I hear it and I appreciate it and you're right. I mean, ordinarily, people don't say to me, oh, the school district's doing a great job. You guys are wonderful people. We, we all joke on school board that it's the most thankless job you can ask for because you only hear from parents when they're upset about something. But even in my experience of hearing from people and hearing negative things from people, the amount of complaints that I receive about retests is, I'll say statistically significant.
And I can add to that, sir. When you're looking at it, a lot of times, and, and teachers are going to address some of this tonight. But generally speaking, when you're looking at a retest, depending upon how it's been implemented, some of the processes need to be fixed, straight up. They do. Because we've set up some systems that students think they're getting a retest just because they show up and they try the first time. And there's some accountability issues that we need to take a look at in the system, like we just, we do. There's certain classes that we need to revisit. However, what we're finding as, as we're getting students really more accountable in these field testing classrooms where they're really starting to own their own learning, is the number of retests are dropping because the students are really buying into what's going on. They know what they're doing, they're confident in their learning. And the number of reassessments are dropping because they don't need to do reassessments as they're going through these processes. So you're getting what's considered mastery of learning or proficiency depending upon the language that you're using. So you really see students that are taking ownership and you're seeing teachers that are not just professional graders anymore, which is really what we've kind of turned into. And we're really looking at a system that is looking at student learning and they don't have to do reassessments. And what you're seeing is over time, the reassessment of summative assignments won't have to happen the way it does now. The sheer number of them will decline just because of what we're doing to shift this process. So the conversations we're having now about grades and about this reassessment stuff is what Mr. Wright likes to call a right-now problem. And some of the stuff that we keep talking about around grading is a right-now problem. That the more we do this and the more we keep talking about the system and the more we keep communicating and teaching each other, the less these problems are going to exist because students are accountable for their own learning in ways they're not always in the system right now. And that's really why we have the teachers here tonight, because one of the things that I think, from my own personal experience and having done this for so long, I mean, I'm in a unique spot. I've been in this district for 21 years. And I've been on the grading committee in some permutation for a decade. And we've been talking about no zeros and we've been talking about what to do with grades and 50s and all these other things to hold students accountable and to make sure that they're accountable for learning and teachers are accountable for teaching for a long, long time. for a long, long time. And I think what we do sometimes is we talk about this stuff, but we don't always talk to the practitioners. And the practitioners are the teachers in the classrooms living it, and we don't give them a chance to showcase it. And one of the things that I think we keep focusing on is this portfolio, capital P. And again, I'm stealing this from Mr. Wright, because I love the way he phrases it. The portfolio is a backpack. It could be a backpack, it can be a folder, it can be a Canva, it can be, you know, a Google Form, a Google Doc, any number of things that we can put student work in, a collection of things. But what we don't talk about is the portfolio that's a process. And the portfolio that's a process is what the teachers that are going to talk to you about tonight have been living. And granted, we have 60-plus people that have been doing the work officially, but there's a whole bunch of teachers that are doing portfolio work right now that we don't even know about. Because as we're talking to people organically, I was in an art class today. I saw a teacher doing this whole communication with her class, and I sat there and I leaned against the wall and I was like, this is really cool. This is really cool. Talked with her at the end of class, and I'm like, you know, this is portfolio stuff. And she went, yeah, yeah, I think it is. And we had this great conversation, and she's like, can I come to the bootcamp? I filled out your survey, can I come to the bootcamp? I'm like, absolutely. We're going to send you more information after we get through the grading workshop and a few other things. So there's a lot of organic things that are happening. We just have to make sure we get in classrooms and say, this is already happening, we just haven't tagged it as such. So in most instances, because I've been in so many classrooms this year, teachers are already doing it, we just haven't called it the right thing yet. So it really is just a learning curve, and that's what the teachers tonight are going to be able to talk about.
Yeah. So, look, my observation would be as follows. First off, I'm only talking about retests. I get not giving zeros and giving 50s, and people sometimes still question that, but mathematically, that's very explainable and it makes common sense. But if you're going to say things like, oh, the number of retests is going down, or this is getting better, there's obviously two components. I mean, we ought to keep statistics or somehow be able to document that. And then the ultimate proof, and the proof in the pudding, is going to be do test scores and proficiency scores go up. So, I mean, I'm not saying let's end the process. Do have serious questions about human nature and motivation, which is why we kept, and we're always going to keep, as long as I'm having anything to do about it. We're always going to keep homework, part of the grade. But, I mean, I'm willing to give it time, but let's, don't just tell me things that, oh, yeah, they're going down. I mean, document that somehow, because, you know, as an attorney, I like to see what it is you're citing, and I don't want to just be told something. And, but we'll give it time and we'll see how it goes. But I will tell you, more than anything else, in a statistically significant higher percentage than complaints I've ever gotten about anything, and it comes from everybody, people don't like the retests.
And I can't argue with you. You're right, they don't. And as a scientist, I like data too, and I'm hoping we can gather that, but we need more time to do it.
I agree. And I'm not saying, where's the data? Why don't you have it for me tonight? But as we progress through the years, hopefully, we're keeping track every year.
That's our, is the plan. So I'd like to turn it over to the teachers and see what else we can talk about. So without further ado, I'm going to call up my first group of teachers and we're going to see what happens.
Do you need these teachers to be into this group of special education?
Yes. No, I mean, not necessarily in this moment, but yes.
It's in the room. Okay. Thank you.
Many can, because many of them are in inclusive settings or have their inclusive settings.
So when it's time for them, can you point them out to me?
I will do my best.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Mark D'Alessio. I am a eighth grade social studies teacher at Everett Meredith Middle School. Steve, do you want to change the slide? There you go.
Next slide.
Next slide, Steve. Okay. So I'm one of those teachers that actually is unofficially piloting portfolios. Throughout my whole teaching career, I've been looking at what do grades actually mean? And I thought I had it. I wasn't giving zeros. I was doing retakes. I had my own little system. And then when Dr. Harrison shared with me this portfolio system, I was a little annoyed because I'm like, I have my system, I don't want to change. But I also wanted to know more about it. So I joined the portfolio work group. I met with Dr. Harrison over the summer, and she gave me research, and I began changing how I teach. Specifically, what do grades represent to me as a teacher? What do they represent to the students and to the parents? And do they actually show learning? Or are they more just, the student has done an assignment, turned in, maybe that student just got the answers off the internet? It's not really showing learning, it's just showing more of a behavior. So the beginning of this school year, I changed how I was going to grade. I made all my summatives 40 points, using still summatives and formatives. And I changed it using a rubric. All my rubrics now, every assignment I have has a four-point rubric: mastery, proficient, approaching, and needs work. I do that for the summatives and the formatives. What it made me do, though, is I had to look at every assignment I was giving the students to make sure it was actually looking at learning and not behaviors. So I went through every summative I gave in the past, every formative. I dropped a lot, but there's still stuff I like to do. I do my warm-up every morning, but I can't count that as a grade, because we talk about it as a class, and it's just, did they actually write it down? Did we discuss? So what I did, I changed it to everyday evidence, which is now going to be everyday evidence of learning. And what I found out was, even though the students know it's not counting towards a grade, they're still doing it. And then I decided to branch out and try other assignments where the students are actually doing the work, even though it's not a grade, but they know it's going to help them learn and show their progress on the formatives and summatives. So I'm still learning, I'm still practicing some rubrics I gave, and after I was grading it, I looked at it and said, that rubric didn't work out. So it's definitely a work in progress, but I know for eighth grade social studies, we're definitely throughout the district now, looking at how we grade and using these rubrics and having common rubrics across the district. All right. So I'm going to turn it over to Jen.
Thank you. Yes, I have notes, because otherwise I'll talk for 10 minutes and won't say anything, and Katie doesn't want me to do that. So I'm Jennifer Loftus, and I teach math at Apple High. This year, through a different PL that I have been involved in, I started implementing building thinking classrooms. Students are up at whiteboards. I have whiteboards up all around my room. Students are up and working and doing the math in the classroom, talking about it, collaborating about it. But it was very new. It wasn't anything that I had done before. It was a new method for me to get the kids to communicate, because otherwise, I ask a question and it's crickets. And so it gets them, they're not talking to me anymore, they're talking to each other, and it works fabulously to get the kids to talk to each other without that fear of ridicule of saying something in front of the class. There's noise, and they're able to talk to each other. With this new method of instruction, this whole year has been a process. It's still a work in progress. I had to change my mindset around what lessons, what the lessons were going to look like. I had to change what questions I asked. I had to change what questions I answered. The students had to change their mindset around what was that they were doing, what was that I was asking them to do. Did they actually come away learning what I was asking them to learn? So this was not only a process for me, but it was a process for them. But at this point in the year, the students know what my expectations are, they know what to expect. They come in asking, are we going to the boards today? So they actually enjoy being able to get up and, even though you do hear some grumbles still. But I did do, I was one of those that only did like one unit with the portfolio. And it kind of followed the same kind of initial path. There was a mindset shift that had to take place. The students had to think about what they were thinking about while they were at the boards. I kept trying, as they were at the boards, I'm keeping reminding them, what is it that you're thinking about? Because you're going to have to come back and reflect. Think about what it is that you're doing here, you're going to have to come back and reflect, and that's not an easy thing to do. Some students embraced that process, right? And others thought that it was just one of those other things. If it was a student that wasn't doing it in another class, then it was just one other thing. If they were doing it in other classes, then, you know, they had a little bit more buy-in. But by the end of that unit, I did have more kids that were more into it and more willing to do some more reflection on it and think about what they were thinking about. If I had continued past that one unit, I feel confident they would have shown more improvements in their own reflections. Their perseverance would have increased, their own effort in learning and what they could do better. I did, even though I didn't strictly do the portfolio process, I did implement that stuff as I pushed forward, and so they were used to doing some more of that kind of reflection. Currently, I'm reflecting on what happened this year with my thinking classrooms. I started because I felt it would lend itself nicely to our own district beats, and also with having students be more reflective on their thinking and on their learning. And for my part, as I'm reflecting, giving them more opportunities to be reflective. My big takeaway is for the obstacles that came with this is the apathy that some of these students show. Right now, what I see is that the students are working for a grade. It's always, is this going to be a grade? Is this going to be a grade? I'm giving them something, is this going to be a grade? And if it's not graded, they're not going to do it. If not given class time to complete it, they have to do it at home, they're not going to do it. If they know they get a second chance on a summative, they're not going to prepare for it. If they struggle a little bit, you know, then they're going to give up. Then, you know, the chance that they're going to complete it, they'll try, they'll try a little bit, and trying to get them to get in that productive struggle is a challenge, and to get them to persevere for that. The grit and perseverance in the students is what's lacking, but I think it can be developed. Just like it was when I first started with those boards in my room, I had to develop the process that they were using at the boards. And I think with this process, developing that reflection, developing that, yes, I'm giving you this thing, I need you to do this thing, no, you're not going to get a grade for it, but I am going to tell you how you're doing, so that you can then reflect on how you're doing and what it is that you need to do to get better. We, as adults, struggle with these kind of growing pains. When we first started, I'm like, this isn't going to work for math. I had colleagues, this isn't going to work for math. And now I've got math colleagues in this room ready to share what's working in math. So if the teachers are willing to persevere, we can teach the kids how to persevere with it.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Dr. Walker from Redding Middle School. To follow up to what Jen said.
Wait, are you the district teacher of the year? Woo! Every single time.
Thank you. I would, I would like to start out, and I only have 90 seconds, because we have great voices to be heard. To follow up with what Jen said, change is hard. And so it doesn't matter if we're changing to portfolio grading, change is going to be hard. And so that's the mindset we got to remember, change is hard, but we can overcome that change and the betterment of our students. And that begins with, for me, I'm going to speak a little bit about thinking classrooms and what my classroom looks like in a thinking classroom is student data and student accountability. And so along with portfolio grading, it's all student data. It's all student growing. And what I found out in the one unit that I did is that I have been doing portfolio grading portions of portfolio grading throughout the year, and didn't even know I was doing it before I came to the unit that I was doing it in. But my thinking classroom with student data and student accountability all comes from how they perceive and intake the information. I'm also a math teacher. And how they look at it from their lens, and not always from the lens of a teacher giving the information. Rather be for differentiation for our students of needs, but we want them to be accountable for where they're at and how they grow from where they're at. So this year, in my classroom, as a thinking classroom, which is all a part of portfolio grading, is student accountability and where do you grow from, from where you're at in mathematics. And so that is my piece on thinking classrooms and...
Thank you. So I just want to tag onto obstacles while we're transitioning teachers for the next slide, and Steve, you can go ahead and pop over while I'm doing that. Student perseverance is one of the things that we've touched on, because whenever you're looking at it, it is one of the obstacles we need to overcome, because sometimes students don't realize what they have is their own capacity, just like teachers don't always realize their own capacity. And that perseverance and grit is one of those things that we do need to work on, because we have taught them in the system that it really only matters if you do a grade, if you get a grade for it. So in the classrooms where we detach the grade from the thing, again, not getting rid of grades, but taking the grade away from the thing, the immediacy of it, we do see a shift in that thinking, and it does take some time and does take some opportunity.
Good afternoon, folks, or good evening. I'm Troy Johnson. I teach sixth grade social studies inclusion for Redding Middle School. And if you have any questions, man, I'd be happy to answer. Oh, my nickname, some principals, students I taught, is the project king. I like to talk to respect it, but how I use projects instead of regular tests in my classroom, I find it a lot more easier to give the feedback and build connections with students with the feedback. So I get to find out a lot more about students through these projects. Now, when I do these projects, I don't think about what grade I'm going to give them. I find out what I can find out about these kids through these projects. So I use that throughout the year. Also, with student-to-teacher connection, like I said, they find out about me as well, what I'm thinking when I give these projects out. Also, with student-to-student connection, I'm thinking to learn about creativity from other students, gather ideas. When it comes from a special ed standpoint, is that students that might not have the ability can learn from other students in the classroom, and you'll see how the climate is in my classroom that students with advanced ability teach other students, like they're basically their teacher, and they do a great job, I have to admit. So if you come into my classroom, you see a climate of learning through the projects, building that portfolio, learn from each other. If you see the growth from beginning of the year to now, for example, I had a student with their project desk recently, I called him to the desk, give him feedback. So I was about to give him the feedback. He told me, Mr. Johnson, I know exactly what to say. He read off everything I was about to say. I told him, you have to leave me now because you take away my job. So the growth from the projects using portfolios that, in my opinion, instead of tests, shows the true growth of what they learned from beginning to end. And remember, I tell my colleagues that being a middle school teacher is only a stepping stone to the future. Don't think about the grade as now. Think about it as a learning process to get to the end process. All right?
It's a simple project that you do.
Oh, a simple project, all right. A recent project, I call it the Master Chef, Master Chef Project, where students design their own menu based on civilizations from the past. They build from the ground up. They put their own twist on it, which brings about the creativity. You won't want to hear about like frog leg soups with, you know, rosemary, you probably won't hear about it, but that's creativity. You might not like it now, but it plays into the future. That might be somebody's delicacy in the future. They might open a restaurant based off that. So when you think about that, oh, kind of get a cut if you don't get a piece of the action. But you'll see that it brings about that creativity mindset through that growth of projects to projects. We just have reason about the Three Gorges Dam. The pros and cons of building the Three Gorges Dam in there, what's the impact to society? You see how they use their creativity and their outside, that's not testable. Some of the stuff they think about is based on, based on discussion we have, based on what we're doing in the classroom portfolio. Now, I'll be honest, man, for some of the challenges I have, being an inclusion teacher, just in the past, I had a spec ed teacher in my classroom, so we can easily play off each other, give them feedback. This is the first year I didn't have a co-teacher, a spec ed teacher to help me out. So it made it difficult, time to give the feedback to each student that they needed. Some students needed extra time with the feedback. So I'll be honest, it was difficult to get to every student, give them the full feedback that they required. that they required. I was lucky and fortunate, two things. Had colleagues who were willing to do enrichment and give them the feedback they needed to help out. In addition, that was needed as well, is that being in social studies, I still have versatility that I can hit one standard in one area, then lessen the standard in another area, but still cover the same topic or standard. That was the main two things I had. But it is, the pros do outweigh the cons, ma'am. We just got to figure out how to even out, get rid of some of the cons. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ally Carrigan. I teach eighth grade science inclusion at Meredith Middle. One of the things I do a lot in my classroom is peer-to-peer feedback. So we do still a lot of teacher-student, student-teacher feedback. But at the beginning of the year, I was doing too much teacher feedback, and the kids were like, we want to talk to each other. So that's what I started to figure out, how I can implement that in my classroom. So what I do is, after an assignment that I think the students should reflect on, kind of look at, see if they really understood it, I give them kind of a guideline and an example of like, here's what the expectation is that you should know. And I have them critique their friends' work, critique their own work, and kind of reflect on that whole process of feedback. I also teach them how to give feedback, not just, yeah, you did that right, good job, or that kind of stuff. So we look at not just what the right answer is, but also how can we help each other get to that right answer. This has allowed my students to engage in very meaningful conversations. As I'm walking around, I really hear them using that vocab, kind of correcting each other to kind of show that they know more, which is very interesting to see. And they also, everything that they do translates into their work. So they're using the language, they're talking to each other, they want to do more of those things. And then they have a lot more confidence when it comes to the actual assessment that we're doing. They know the routines and expectations, especially at this point in the year, so they know that it's not just social hour with their friends, they can't talk about what they're doing on the weekends, it's focused on the work, they have to get it done in the time that I give them to get it done. And one of the things that's nice, too, is from that, it leads to things that I haven't even thought of. Like, it really allows the students to kind of express their ideas with what works best for them, which has really been a nice thing for some of my special education students in the room as well. Because then I get to kind of hear more from them, and not their struggle, but like how they can relate to it as well.
At what point in the school year did you start the peer-to-peer feedback? Did you start that initially, or...
I started it after our first unit, so I would probably say October is about when I started it.
And at what point from that do you feel like the kids really kind of took on to it and it was productive?
It probably took, because I do a lot, like, within one unit, they have about 10 different things that they have, the different options for feedback. So sometimes it's a self-reflection, sometimes it's peer-to-peer feedback, sometime it is me giving them feedback and they're kind of reflecting on that feedback. So I would say it probably took them the first about five-ish assignments, about halfway through, when they really started to understand, like, okay, I really do need to start using this vocabulary. Okay, I really do need to start kind of explaining more. Because I always tell my students, you know, you don't know your audience, you have to pretend that they don't know anything about science. So you have to kind of over-explain. And they started to really do that at the end of the, it's probably the second unit of it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I am Michael Husney. I am a world language teacher, specifically Spanish, at Odessa High School. So I'm here to kind of build off of what Troy and Ally had talked about with feedback structures. So for one, I have the unique perspective of being the world language person, which means that I get to kind of talk about what that looks like, and specifically our subject matter. So world languages has been doing proficiency and mastery-based stuff for the better part of a decade. So it's not something that was really that new to us, as far as like the way in which we grade. So that kind of made me interested in wanting to adopt it, because I think it made it a little bit easier for us to transfer, because we already had structures in place. So we've already been kind of working towards how we can level up students, that's the language that we use within world language, moving kids from novice-level learners to like intermediate-level learners, depending upon what level they're at. And for me, I was really focused on trying to improve their writing. Writing is the most tactile of all the things that you're going to see in a world language. It's really difficult to work initially from feedback on speaking, because it's such an ephemeral thing, it comes and it goes. And while we can do recording, I thought that writing was the best way for us to kind of just narrow down what we had. So we worked from initially me giving them exemplars from students that were previously in the past, their names clearly not there. But my job as a teacher was kind of to curate examples of different proficiency levels according to the rubrics that we had. And then after we did that, then I said, okay, let's explore, let's look at our rubrics, let's leverage them, and let's see if you can assess them the same way. And I think that there was something that was kind of a learning process in the beginning, because students had to learn how to utilize the rubrics. And I think that's a really important consideration when we consider this portfolio process, is the rubrics are really, really important. If anything, we kind of learned by looking at exemplars, there were certain areas in our rubrics that were really successful, that were super clear to students, and then there were other areas that we were like, oh, this could be clearer, this needs to be more student-facing. So I think that was a great part of the process, of just me kind of jumping in on this. And once the students were able to kind of calibrate, those are the two words I've been using in the back of my head, was curate well and calibrate well. If the students can calibrate and know how to grade the same way that we calibrate, then when we invite them to do things like Ally was talking about, where they get to do that peer-to-peer reflection, where they get to evaluate their own work, it's 10 times easier. Because for one, when they were evaluating originally on the exemplars, it's not anybody in the classroom, it's somebody who's distant, somebody who's not physically here, like, they know that it's a peer, but they don't know who it is, because it's somebody that was in the class before them, right? So when they got to eventually do their own work, for one, it was a lot less, I feel like the kids were a lot less nervous, because they already knew how to calibrate, they knew what the rubrics looked like, and they were able to give each other productive feedback. And kind of like how Ally was saying, those productive conversations from peer-to-peer make our jobs as teachers 10 times easier, because that revision process, it starts in the rough drafts, it starts in the little formatives that we're able to give, so that way the students know what they're doing ahead of time, give that feedback, and they know the corrections that need to be made. And I found that it was a super productive process in improving their writing. And from the world language perspective, I think it's important for us to note that the two challenges that we did face. One was making sure that we did have student-facing rubrics, so that's something that we're going to try and work on. Like, even though all world language teachers aren't necessarily like part of the pilot program, as Katie was kind of saying, like, we're all kind of bought into this mastery level, you know, process, because it's what we've been doing, that's how world languages operate best. And something that we kind of have to figure out, that meta-analysis is crazy important, that reflection is like absolutely key for students to do well. Within world languages, we have to ask, when does the target language come into play? Because we're supposed to be 90% of our classroom in the target language, which gives us a total of 12 minutes for the entire class for us to do it. So something that we have to kind of negotiate is, when does meta-analysis start in English? And when do we make that transition over into the target language? Because the ideal is, by the time we're done, kids reflecting in the target language is, in my opinion, one of the highest goals that we could possibly set. Because doing it, just meta-analysis by itself is already like something that's really great, but doing it in a completely different language than what they were originally used to, I think is a widely valuable skill for them.
Hi. I'm Eileen Murray. I'm from Appleton High School. I teach digital communications technology, which means I teach Photoshop and Illustrator and Premiere, so it's a lot of fun. But in my class, we've actually already been doing portfolios since I started, it's part of our curriculum. So this year, what I did was I went and did the summer workshop, and kind of realized that I needed to include more reflection and more feedback. So that's what I was working on this year. So one of the things that I would have my students do is, even before I gave them a grade, I would have them, either give them self a grade, self-grade, and also reflect, but then I would also give them feedback, whether it was written or oral. One of my favorite things to do was have my students come up and talk with me one-on-one. Tell me what they learned, tell me how the project went, what they liked and what they didn't like. And then from there, I would give them feedback. Most of the time, students would go directly back to their seats and make any corrections that they needed to make, and then return it in. And what started to happen is that students would actually, from that, start asking for more feedback along the way, rather than waiting until the end of the project. They got more comfortable asking questions, they got more confident in the classroom, and they just, I felt like they were learning more. They were more focused on what they were learning, and how to make things look good, and what skills and tools that they needed to use, and how they could use them. And the students also said that this was, they've really enjoyed coming up and talking to me about their projects and getting that feedback. And it lent itself to also improve our classroom, like, our classroom connections and our classroom environment. I definitely felt a difference when I wasn't doing the one-on-ones, or the other classrooms where I wasn't really testing this out, where I didn't give them feedback before I gave them the grade, they weren't really like as excited about it, or they wouldn't go back and make their corrections after I had already given them a grade, it was before I gave them the grade, when I went through that feedback that they really, really focused on, okay, well, how can I make this better? This is what Ms. Murray said, okay, let me go back and do it. And so I'm really looking forward to continuing that next year and seeing how my students progress, especially with students that I started with this year.
I always struggle, because I hate to follow with an obstacle, because their classrooms are amazing this year. Like, it's unbelievable, everyone's room here. A common theme that comes up as we've gotten feedback from portfolio pilot teachers is this struggle of time. And a large part of that is because in many buildings, they are soloing this. They are introducing students to this for the first time. They're teaching students, while students in other classes may have had the turn and talk to a peer, they're teaching students structures of, no, give legit feedback, give your partner a next step, and then accomplishing different challenges where it's like, the kid's like, I don't know the answer. It's like, that's okay, you don't have to know the answer to give feedback, working together. And that's a huge part of some of these obstacles, is this time to adoption. So one of the strategies that we're looking at is, one, making sure that obviously we respect time in classroom and time with teacher, but then also looking at ways, where can we start to kind of share that struggle at first? And part of that, when we move into adoption, is going to be dividing some of this work up into different subject areas, where not every individual teacher needs to teach 100% of the portfolio process on day one to every single class. If we know that in a middle school, in sixth grade, that ELA, social studies, math, and science are all going to run these lessons independent of each other, then we know that those kids have gotten that exposure and those skills, they'll need to be refined per teacher, per class, like we do with all skills. But part of that is looking for ways to decrease the amount of time to adoption, as well as increasing those skills for both the students, but then also those of us that are supporting teachers, and really being present with them. So that's a big part of working with administration, coaches, coordinator specialists, and really making sure that we are supporting people as best we can. And part of that is making sure that we are respecting their time as much as possible. Next slide, Steve.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Walter. I'm an ELA teacher at Lewis El Redding Middle School. I do teach in an inclusion setting. With that said, that has been one of the obstacles for me doing the portfolio pilot this year, because I've had three different co-teachers. And I had three different co-teachers last year, and I promise I'm not the problem. But it has been challenging, because I had every plans of doing the pilot this year. I met with Kevin to make sure that our curriculum was aligned for. In fact, the HMH Into Literature curriculum is really made for portfolio, because a lot of the assignments aren't just, okay, here's a multiple choice test, here's this essay, there are, we can do podcasts, and infographics, and timelines, and so many other things to help kids show what they've learned without taking a test. With that said, when I went to start the pilot, my co-teacher quit. So I decided, instead of focusing on trying to pilot a whole unit, I'm going to start building in the building, what I call the building blocks for portfolio. So I focused this year on self-assessment and reflection. One thing that's cool about Into Literature is we have a tool called Writeable, and it embeds self-assessment into every activity we do. So students have to grade themselves on a rubric, they have to reflect on what they did well, what they didn't do well. Now, a lot of kids, like Ally said, will just click, 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 and then I'm done. I did my self-reflection. So we've had to take time to teach the kids how to do a self-assessment. So that's been one of the things we're doing this year. In fact, tomorrow, my lesson is how to do peer feedback, and I'm going to break down every rubric item, tell them what they should be looking for, so then they're going to do a peer review, and then they have to physically give comments with accountable talk stems to show, like, this is what meaningful feedback is. Because by the time I get to the grade, you should already have like a nearly perfect piece of writing, because you've had teacher conferences, you've had student feedback, you've had your own feedback. What else I do is a lot of reflections via our closures. Every day, we do a closure activity. Instead of doing an activity where students, okay, I'm going to test them or quiz them on what they learned, they're reflecting on what they've learned. Some days, they might do a self-writing on a scale of one to five, how hard did I work today? Or, here's my muddiest point, I'm confused about this point, so I know I can go back to them and revisit that skill. And so students don't necessarily realizing that they are piloting portfolio, but they've been reflecting on their work every day. We do a daily reflection, a weekly reflection with goals, and then at the end of the summative, we do what I call feedback and reflection stations. It's not my idea, I got it from my instructional coach, but the kids look the feedback I gave them, they reflect on the feedback, what could they have done better? They give me feedback on what they liked about the process, so if I need to change it, I can. And then I meet with them, because in some cases, the students are not done the summative, and I can figure out, okay, what was the roadblock? How can we get this done? Because we're moving on. So those have been some big wins for me. We still have students that are struggling with this idea of self-assessment and reflection, but Dr. Walker is on the same team as me, and she's been doing this as well, so the kids are seeing it in multiple classes. And I also do the curriculum work for the seventh grade, so I'm hoping to build more portfolio stuff into the curriculum for next year. I did not look at my notes, so I'm sorry.
Hi, everyone. Bear with me, I'm a little nervous. My name is Amber Brandon, newly Radford. I teach math at Odessa High School. I'm not going to lie, I've always preferred a more traditional approach to teaching math, and I still do pencil and paper math in my classroom. And like Jen, portfolios look a little, the processes look a little different in my room, too. But surprise, they're still doing pencil and paper math in my room. So let me take a picture here of what portfolio processes do look like in my room. What's changed for me is what happens after the test. After this assessment, I will get the assessments back, and I will give feedback back to students on those paper tests. I then pass those assessments back out into my classroom and let students dive into them. I give them time in class to look through them. What they then do is they match the questions in the assessment to the success criteria that is in student-friendly language, and they look at what were they assessed on. They should kind of already have an idea of what things that they are being assessed on, since they're already familiar with the success criteria, but they get the chance to look at each question in the assessment and match it to the success criteria. They then tell me, as their teacher, what level of mastery they were at. I use a not-yet, approaching, and mastered scale in my room, and the students then conference with me one-on-one, and go through each item of success criteria, and talk to me about what skills they're doing great at, and what skills they still need to work on. That has been kind of the biggest shift in my classroom, is those one-on-one conversations. The coolest thing has been hearing students use that academic language with me. That's been the biggest change over the last three years that I've been working with this. I have students telling me, you know, Ms. Brandon, I know how to use the Pythagorean theorem to solve for a missing side in a right triangle. What I don't yet know is how to use trigonometry to solve for missing angles. That's incredible to hear students using that language, to hear that in the classroom. So that's been the biggest change. The conversation has not been about grades, it's been about the skills that I'm assessing. And I've witnessed this transformation and the shift in my classroom, and it's been empowering to see students take ownership over their own learning. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nikita Williams. I teach biology at Odessa High School, and I'm here to talk about reassessment, retakes, and relearning. So what I understood that to be was, I was definitely against it, let me tell you. I was definitely against it in the beginning. I'm like, retake? Who has time to be re-grading all of this? So it was like, okay, take a step back, what does it really mean? So once I understood the true meaning for myself, it was more of the students learning and proving their learning. And that's, once I understood that myself, I was like, I got it, I can do this. And by doing these different strategies, the reassessment and the relearning, I was able to actually give meaningful feedback. So it's not just feedback, it's meaningful feedback, targeted learning plans for those kids, because I knew exactly where their areas of weakness are, so I can actually focus my attention with those students even better. I feel as though that this is the best practice, the strategy is best practice, it benefits the students no matter their learning levels, or no matter where they fall in line with their learning abilities. So after the students in my classroom, after they received the detailed feedback, I had students like, but I knew that, though. It's like, well, prove it. Prove it. Because for me, it's like, it's okay, it's a learning process, it's okay. But for them, it's like, prove it. And their ability to actually, the biggest change was their ability to actually speak to the learning. And for me, it's like, oh, it scared me, because I wasn't ready for that type of progression with the students, to get to where we all want them to be, especially in biology. It was like, oh my goodness, I scared myself with doing this with these kids. They were actually able to use the learning targets and the success criteria to figure out and determine their areas of weakness, and actually where to focus on with their growth. For me, the ability for them to identify those weaknesses and then make a plan for success, that's mind-blowing for me. It's like, wait, wait. So I learned that there were two types of students for me, in my course. There were the students who knew where their weaknesses are based on the feedback, and say, okay, well, I can prove it by doing this. They would teach a class. I wouldn't set up the lesson, they would do this and teach students. Those type of students were able to just kind of go, and knew exactly where they needed to prove theirself to me. And then there was the other student, type of student, who I know the area of weakness, because it's in my feedback, but I just don't know how to move forward from here. Where do I go? So with that, I was able to actually sit down with the kids and guide them where to go next, and really focus on their weaknesses, only their weaknesses, they're already strong, don't waste their time, focus on what, where they need to go. Because it's all about the mastery for us. So we would look at, we would sit down, we would look at things like other assignments that they've done, like, hey, try this, or retry this assignment, or, okay, let's look at these notes that I provided for you, let's go over that. And then they would reassess. So reassess looks a little different, I'm not giving them the entire test again. We're only focused on the areas of weaknesses. So they would sit down, they would take a, whatever it is, take them in the assessment, and then they would actually rate themselves prior to turning it into me to see actually where they fall on that mastery rubric and why they think that. It's a whole nother thing when they can tell you, okay, you know what, I think I'm here because of this reason. And to get to that point is really, really, really exciting for me. And then they were able to use those standards and the success criteria to actually guide them into putting themselves on a scale on this rubric to figure out where they actually are. So for me, when comparing and contrasting where the students are currently and then my previous students before doing this process, I can see that on their assessments on their first attempts, they have scored higher points on their first attempts, so which really alleviated and eliminated a lot of the retakes of the assessment. Because the academic language they were using was amazing, okay? But from this experience, myself and the students, it really is just sort of amazing, this whole process.
So whenever you're looking at this, one of the quandaries that we have and even one of the conversations we keep having from a curriculum lens really does come down to what to grade and not to grade. And it's because we don't want grades to go away for obvious reasons. We need to have something in the system that's talking about student performance. So we do need to go back and really look at what is earning a grade and what is not because the bottom line is the work that students are doing always needs to be assessed. But that's the shift in mindset and the shift in learning that needs to happen.
Hi, I'm Samantha McFarland from Everett Meredith Middle School, eighth grade math. And kind of speaking to what Katie was saying with deciding what to grade and when to grade, I was one of those people that, next slide. Got to do it. I was one of those people who really wanted to grade everything and really wanted to give students exit tickets and everything and see where they were. And then I was sitting there for hours, putting them into Schoology and putting them into Home Access Center. And when I started piloting and getting part of the summer enrichment program and now teaching the honors geometry over the summer for the past couple of years, I wanted to ramp that up. So I met with Dr. Harrison, and we did that. I gave exit tickets that were one question, very focused standard. The students would answer that question, they would immediately come up and see me, and I'd instantly give them feedback. So just imagine a classroom where they're finishing, as they finish coming up, I have 10 students, they're getting in line, they're, they're kind of reflecting on themselves, and I'm, I'm instantly, yep, you're doing great, nice job, or, oh, we, we had a little error here, can you go back and fix that and then come back up? And they're instantly getting feedback on that without the stake of a grade attached to it. And that happened during the summer geometry class about eight times a day because we are doing a lot of lessons. And then over this past year, I was fully prepared to scale it to my co-taught Algebra I class. Unfortunately, like a lot of people, we did have the teacher shortage, and I ended up teaching in the auditorium for a couple of months. I still did it in the auditorium. We had students come down, they would meet one-on-one with me. It is a learning process on trying to get them to realize that this is not a grade, and it did take a couple of times for the students to stop asking, when is this going to be a grade? And me to tell them that it's just for feedback. Here's what an example test question would look like, a single question, not five or six, it's not taking you more than a couple of minutes, but giving that feedback one-on-one with students. And you would notice that especially in the classroom, they would start looking at each other and like, I forgot to use the vocab. And like other teachers were saying, the vocab really increased. Students stopped asking if it was for a grade. We did another exit ticket, and very rarely do I hand it back the next day. I usually give it back immediately, so time management was a big component of, I need to make sure I have the time built into my lesson to give that instant feedback. If I need to meet with them the next day, the students were asking me when they walked in, are we getting our exit tickets back today? Yes, you are, we're going to meet one-on-one. And again, the conversation, especially in math, was not about, oh, what is my grade now? What did I do? What, what grade would I have gotten on this? It was about, this is what I did wrong, how can I fix this? Is there a standard that goes along with this, especially since we're doing iXL now? And we can have a focus standard for our students. It also allowed us to have time for our spec ed kids to have that one-on-one conversation, especially being in a co-taught classroom, of getting feedback without that high stake of a grade. Because we know that a lot of students see that grade and they start panicking, and they're like, oh my goodness, I have an assessment in front of me. This is a low-stake opportunity with the portfolio implementation. So it did take some time as we got there, but it was able to be scaled. Now being back in my classroom, again, we had an exit ticket twice this week, and one, they got feedback right away, and they knew they had a summative coming up, and they're like, I got this. And they are so confident with not only their vocab, but the look on their face when they're like, yes, I know I'm going into this assessment fully prepared. And I also don't have the issue of kids not doing something when it's not graded. They know that this is their chance to get feedback, not only from me, but sometimes their peers, without having a grade attached to it and feeling like they have that anxiety going into that final assessment, especially with some of the negative mindset around math. Because it can be a scary topic for a lot of people. But I've seen it scaled, not only from the accelerated geometry course that I teach over the summer, to the full-blown auditorium, to now back in my own classroom. It's able to be implemented in all of those places.
Hi, I'm Amy Morris. I'm the social studies teacher at Odessa High School. And I started Odessa High School in 2020, and we were the first school to go to AP for all, for our ninth grade social studies class. So since 2020, I've been trying to figure out the best way to teach AP to all-level learners, and I've changed things every single year. And then this past summer, I moved up from teaching human geography the first year, and now I teach US government politics. And so I found out that there was a project-based learning curriculum that College Board supports for my course, and I asked Mr. Tiberi if he could send me there. And I ended up taking that training. And when I came back from it, I went to Jen Ingalls and said, this is going to fit with portfolio grading, who do I talk to? And she hooked me up with Katie, and I talked to her about that and decided to pilot. Of all the things I've tried in the four years, this has definitely been the most valuable for all my students. I teach special ed kids in the AP classroom with a co-teacher, and with the portfolio, they all have a way to find success. Every child in my room can find success in something. It's an AP exam at class, so I'm preparing them for an AP exam, they're going to have to take an AP exam in May, I'm preparing them for that. So in every project portfolio, they have a multiple choice test, and they have some sort of writing that's connected to an FRQ. We built those up as the year goes on, the tests get longer, the writing pieces get longer. But in every project, they have a portfolio that they have to submit as a third summative option. And a kid that maybe isn't a great test taker, or isn't planning to take the AP exam because they wouldn't have picked the class if they didn't have to, is able to do the project and show mastery in that project, and then they're not failing because their, their test grade brings them down. So that has been a huge win for my, the AP, AP for all side of things. For just AP in general, I have always, ever since I started teaching AP, thought of it as the AP exam in May is the end game, and everything up to that is practice. So I've always done, not retakes, but they could rewrite any FRQs for a second opportunity after they've gotten feedback because my, my goal was to get them to grow and be able to write a really strong FRQ. They always were able to go back into their tests and like, take note on what they were missing and come back and show me a different way that they've learned it because they were going to have to take that test in May. All my tests are cumulative, so they're going to see those types of questions again and again all year long. They have opportunities to show that they're learning it as we go through. And so the portfolio's actually been perfect for that because it allows me to approach it that with my students, and it makes kids that either A, wouldn't have picked, picked the class in the first place, a little bit more confidence to maybe take the test, or kids that were going to take the test no matter what, they feel like they have more ownership over how they get there, and they're not worried about the grade day-to-day, like, oh my God, I failed that test, now my grade's going to down, my GP's going to go down, everything's going to look terrible. It's, we're to the point now where they're able to practice through it, and then the end game is that AP exam. So if they get a three, four, or five on the AP exam, they've clearly mastered it, and they're good to go.
Hello, everyone. I'm Scott Duncan, I also teach at Odessa. I teach English. And mostly, I'm going to focus on talking about AP research, which is a course that I teach for the first time this year. Basically, the way that was designed by College Board was as a course, as a capstone course to finalize all their years of education, one of the last courses they take. And I found it really fascinating when I picked up the course materials this year. You know, we've, we've all heard the, the terms that are used by everybody and the required components from College Board, which in their language, this is the course that if they are passing this course in the end, if they, they pass the exam, they are demonstrating that they're college-ready. The, just, if you hear these terms, they should sound familiar to you. They have to submit what is called a process and reflection portfolio. They are not allowed, it says that teachers may not explicitly give feedback to students on anything that ties into the exam. The entire course is about the exam, so the, the structures are all peer-to-peer and self, self-driven. And so really, if we think about the process of this entire thing, if the, the true capstone course from the College Board perspective is to take this course at the end, it's just interesting to hear those terms being thrown out there. And I think it's also interesting for me because a lot of times, questions pop up about, you know, what are other people saying, right? You know, like, often we'll hear like, well, what do colleges think, right? And I don't, I'm not speaking to that today, I'm not going there at all. But I will say that, you know, this is an external group that is providing us with really clear feedback that the things that we're doing, without really knowing, I mean, I, I picked up this class for the first time this year, it was really fascinating to sit there and be like, huh, process, reflection, portfolio, feedback, peer-to-peer feedback, all of those things were really embedded in that course. So just interesting.
Hi, I'm John Gordon, and I teach orchestra at Kent Wells Bridge and Odessa High School. And my classical music side won out, so I wrote down words as opposed to my jazz side. So here we go. All right, I'm here to represent a lot of the visual and performing arts, but it's, it's a vast array of humans that teach these vast array of courses. And so I want to speak a lot from self, but also from what I've also heard from a lot of my music colleagues. So I want to point out that the overall takeaway from the portfolio process as it relates to the performing arts, and by extension, the visual arts and perhaps even most of the performance-based classrooms, is that there's, there's just a lot of overlap between the VPA programs and the basic structure of the portfolio as a process. For example, something that's always been a strength of music education in other performance-based classrooms has been the pivot away from grades as the focal point or end goal of classroom activities and towards process-based learning objectives. Certainly, a finished artistic work or a product is a benchmark, but every single music educator, they understand that concerts and shows and other presentations only occur after refining individual skills and fundamental performance components into that final product. You can't have that final product without those basic skills. And every single time you have a concert, it's a presentation of those skills every single time. So further extending and transforming that understanding into other classrooms, the portfolio as a process framework, I, in my opinion, and at least in the music education world, allows for greater flexibility to respond to individual student needs. And this is where the constructivist framework comes into play. These, these individual student needs both via our external teacher metrics, our own teacher viewpoints, and as those students perceive them, and that's the self-reflective and the peer-to-peer viewpoints. And those constructivist viewpoints aren't usually seen in most traditional classrooms. And in the music education classrooms, that's the norm. And so when you bring those things into, into a general classroom or, or an applied classroom, that's where those strengths start to apply. So this individualized, self-paced, and sequential process provides unique opportunities for learners to develop applicable skills, both academic and real-world. These are how real-world learners learn, according to their own needs, rather than the intangible and often misconstrued grade-based motivator. So instead of focusing on the grades, now these students are focusing on what actually applies and what is real. It's a unique strength of the VPA programs, that's also a feature of the portfolio process, allowing student perspectives and goals to function as intrinsic motivators towards our larger approximation of performance objectives. However, in a music performance classroom on a granular level, students perform, students reflect, teachers provide feedback, and students refine their playing. It's a cycle that happens every single day, and if you step into any music classroom, you're going to see that cycle moment to moment, moment to moment, again and again. As a means of scaling it upwards, the portfolio process allows for music educators and other applied classroom teachers, I would assume, to make clear approximations of more complex performance goals and targets. In short, music educators already do this. We've been doing it. I have administrators say, music educators do it right, right? I think Matt Burrows has said, music educators do this right. So we already do this. And so when I brought it to what the music educators, several times this year during professional developments, I had almost entire secondary, our entire secondary department show, and they all said, yeah, we're on board, we got this. So we are all, I'm here to say in front of the board, we are all ready and willing to pilot this next year. In fact, some of them already have. And again, it's not rocket science for us, we're just being, we're slowing down just a little bit and being a little bit more overt in the reflective processes. So that's why, when presented with this sequence, planning process, and reflective processes, most, if not all, secondary music educators in the district are again, willing to pilot it. So I pass it on.
Samantha McFarland again. So while it does apply very nicely to our orchestra band and our applied courses as well, I've seen it in art in my own building, it does still apply to our core classes. As the math teacher, again, we have the conversation and really honed in on what the purpose of our formative assessments were. And the purpose of our formative assessments was to gauge where the students were, not really to tie it to that grade. And like, we were talking about previously at the beginning, the summative is the end. It's the end of learning, it's the end of our reflection, where are the students at currently? And that formative assessment and that feedback throughout is that process, not attaching it to a grade, not attaching it to a behavior, but allowing that student to see, here's where our standard is, here's what a question you're going to be posed with, a real-world application, which is where our math curriculum has gone, and can you get feedback on it? Can you perform? So that goes with our students. And changing that mindset, not only for the students, because we've all heard it, is this a grade, but also for the parents, they can see those exit tickets, they can learn from them as well, see where the student is going to progress. And I've had a lot of parent conversations about, yeah, they had an exit ticket this week, you can look at that and see where they are and the feedback that was given to them, we, we talked one-on-one about this. So that is a change of mindset in terms of that. I also have not been putting them in the, in the grade book because it's not a grade. And also, the one time I did, I did get a couple of parent emails, and yeah, we did have a conversation about this. No, they can't do a retake of it because it wasn't even in there as a grade standpoint, it was a conversation one-on-one. So that has been a great transition, and it is a difficulty, it is an obstacle to train, make that transition. It is also an obstacle to try to make sure our exit tickets, because we want to assess everything all the time, of having it focused on what is the standard that the student needed that day. So all of those create shifts in our mindset and does take some process to kind of get used to, but it has been very supportive by the parents that I've had this year and over the summer, and our other colleagues.
We spoke of time management.
Yes.
And so through your lens as, as the educator, what does, how does, how, how has your day changed for the, hopefully for the better?
Definitely for the better.
From like a time management perspective, especially as you make that time, I think you also mentioned, many of you mentioned how you bake in the time to give the student the feedback, but you were saying yours is actually the same day, so kind of like, paint that picture for me.
So I originally kind of piloted this over the summer geometry course, where we're like, learning for seven hours a day in that course, and I'm teaching about six lessons a day. So I wanted to, after each lesson, do a one-question kind of reflection, are, how are we doing? How are we getting it? So again, I would have all the students come up to me and I'd check them off, we'd have a quick conversation, and I'd have that implemented. And I loved doing that in the summer session because the kids got that feedback instantaneously. And that was my struggle going into the school year of, how do I make this time? And it actually doesn't take that much time. Because in a natural classroom, you have those fast finishers, and you have those kids that need extra time. So even as all of our teachers here, we, we have that time built in, especially, all right, this, this will take 10, 15 minutes. While they are working on that, I'm having that one-on-one conversation, and the students that are coming up and are fast finishers are either one of two students, they're the ones who nailed it, they got it, there's not much feedback I can give them. Or they kind of just didn't try as hard the first time, I'm going to give them some more feedback, encouragement, they go back, they get, kind of go back to their seat. And it actually doesn't take that much additional time in the classroom. I've even taught it to my PLC, now that we have a full PLC at, at my school, all of the PLC does it, all three math classes do that instantaneous feedback. And we all do it in our different ways, one uses popsicle sticks and just checks in. I just kind of really good at mapping out the room, and I'm lucky enough to have a co-teacher to help me out with that. But it doesn't take that much extra time, and it actually takes, gives me some time back at the end of the day. I'm not sitting there, sitting there with a staff. I'm not sitting there, sitting there with a stack of 120 papers, grading them for the next day. They're already done, the kids have them back, they're not sitting on my desk, I'm not putting them in Schoology, and I already know where the kids are. And that, I think, is my favorite part, is at the end of the lesson, I can step back with my spec ed teacher and say, here's what we need to change for the next class. And then the kids come in, they do their exit ticket, we instantly grade them, and we're like, we're going to do this for the rest of the day now. And that instant feedback is really nice, that I'm not taking that time to plug everything in the grade book. The students don't have that stress of this was a grade, they're all learning from that opportunity. So it doesn't take that much extra time, and I actually get more back.
Yeah, yeah, mutually beneficial.
Yes, very much so.
I'm glad to hear that, thank you.
Please do that because it's something I also see in some of my, the science classrooms specifically, because that's the one I ever see the most. It's what we're assessing strategically. So it's back to Sam's point about assessing that one question. It's a very meaningful question, a targeted question to that standard. So it's about assessing some questions, not all questions. So you might assign five questions, but you're really only assessing or grading that one question, depending upon what you're doing with it for that day. So it's also about targeting what you're actually offering feedback on to in that class time.
That makes sense.
So some of it's just a little bit of grading smarter, not harder, as it were, if you'll pardon the expression. So we have one more speaker we'd like to...
One question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for going over this information. I heard a lot about peer feedback, reflections, connections. From an equity standpoint, how does this work for non-verbal students who don't communicate well, or those who do sign language? Like, is there something spelt out for them, or what is that like?
I've seen a variety of different techniques. I've seen everything from graphics to pictures to verbal, non-verbal, written. I mean, pretty much the sky's the limit in terms of how teachers have accepted work. I mean, I actually, I can use that same art class again this morning. It was actually a three-dimensional picture that they were supposed to do. It was a window portrait for landscapes, but this student actually did three separate images, and then we put it up as a line. So again, I've seen all kinds of different interpretations, and it really comes down to the students and how they, I'm sorry, the teachers and how they connect with students, and then getting to know the students, and then being responsive to the needs of that student. So it really has been very, very, in terms of what teachers will accept.
Yeah, we've seen teachers using like color boards, like red, green, yellow, emojis, smiley face, frowny face, thumbs up, thumbs down. So there's avenues here, and a lot of cases, especially things like the emojis are more familiar language to a lot of our students. There was a teacher who was like, submit a gif on how you're feeling about this today. Like, things like that, which is how our students are choosing to communicate voluntarily and just then accepting that into academic language. While it seems silly at first, you can get a lot from a student based on which pattern of emojis they choose and things like that. So we are looking for ways to do that. Obviously, not every student is equipped to provide verbal feedback. We have learners that struggle profoundly in those areas, and we are, like we are today, we're looking for ways to better accommodate them and increase access to this and increase our equity overall. So we do have teachers who are already well into that path. It's just about us finding and making sure that everyone has those tools at their disposal when they have those students in front of them.
Thank you.
So our last slide and our last speaker this evening is Mr. Corey Hafer. And we've asked him actually to speak this evening because we're in a fortunate opportunity where Corey has been implementing portfolios for a while now. And I've been fortunate, Corey started in the science department overlapping a little bit and has transitioned into the CTE realm. But he also has the opportunity with Level 1, 2, 3, and 4 versions of his class, that he has cumulative years to be able to do this work. So he's got a portfolio sample or two or three to show you this evening, just to show you what it could look like. This is one example, there are other platforms, but I know that's another question that we get asked frequently, is what can a portfolio look like? So Corey?
And we agreed on an hour, right? Because there's a lot of stuff to cover, is that, it's not dark? I think I was told I have about a minute and a half.
Is it great first?
Yeah, seriously. So first of all, I wish I had way more time, and I would invite all of you, when you have time, come join my classroom. I'm sure my colleagues would welcome, most of them would probably welcome you as well. Honestly, maybe, yeah, seriously though.
They'll be there tomorrow.
Please, come in literally anytime, any day. I think it's fun to see and talk to the students and kind of get a feel for that. I want to just start off telling a story that I've kind of been telling throughout this year. First of all, Corey Hafer, I teach engineering at Middletown High School, also the 2024 Delaware State Teacher of the Year. Starting to get used to that. I want to start just by telling a story of George, a student that I had, I've had for three years. I had him three years ago, and I think without portfolios, he would have failed, and he wouldn't be graduating in a few weeks. He failed my first term in Level 2 Engineering, and I was piloting the portfolio and getting to a point where I loved what I was doing, but I was doing it using a traditional grading system. And he wasn't doing the summative work, he wasn't doing formative work, he was skipping class. When I tried to push him, he just didn't come at all. When he was there, he was playing games. It was just really hard to get the student motivated. And I have quite a few of those. A lot of people assume that engineers in the pathway are like, oh, you get the good kids. I think they're all good kids in every pathway, but honestly, like, we get a lot of students who don't really want to be engineers who aren't motivated, and George was one of those. I realized that I could, you know, zero for the first term, really, he didn't do any work. In that second term, I realized I had an opportunity. He was coming to my class, right? So I was trying to greet him with that smile every day, get him to at least want to be in the room. And eventually, when he started showing up and we mapped out with the portfolio, these are the categories that you need to have when you get to be a senior in the engineering pathway, right? You need to be able to sketch and use CAD and be able to use our tools, like our laser cutter and our 3D printers. He started to be willing to engage a little bit. And then eventually, we were able to actually get him to show some proficiency in some of those skills. He didn't earn a great grade, but he ultimately passed with that portfolio. And as he moved into Level 3 Engineering, I was a little hesitant with this whole thing, right? Like, this student had straight up failed, he shouldn't have passed my class, I didn't think. He just didn't have good work habits, all of that stuff. But in Level 3, he started to show a little bit of growth and a little leadership, and he got really confident with our programming unit and started teaching other students in that area. He actually reached mastery on a lot of other areas he was pretty weak on. He passed Level 3, his portfolio was not great, if we showed an example of it. Can't remember if I linked it or not, I'm happy to show it, but I have to remove some names. His name's not actually George, just a... The point is, he moved into Level 4, our capstone class. And for those of you that have seen the showcase, it happened today at Odessa. I'm super proud of all the kids from Apo, Odessa, and Middletown. This student presented last winter a capstone project where he had applied his CAD skills, his mechanical advantage equations and the math stuff that he'd been showing in that portfolio, not super well, but he'd actually engaged a little bit. He applied all those skills to actually create a prototype that he presented in front of professional engineers, in front of Senator Hanson and our representative Ray Moore. And it's just amazing to think about this student who would have just quit. He would have failed, he would not be graduating, or at least would have a harder path to graduation. And so I think that shows, you know, up here, we kind of have this, the noun, or like the, what's the ultimate why of what we're doing with portfolios? The portfolio is a process, and ultimately, we get this product of a portfolio. To me, the product is not really that portfolio. It's, as I've developed the portfolio, it's really a tool to help get students to show their learning. The learning is that final product of what we do. That could be playing a concert, that could be presenting at the engineering fair and developing that prototype. But we want students to apply the skills that they learn, not just get numbers on a test. Tests are super valuable. In my engineering classes, I still give all the same summative tasks that I did. I give the same trust problem that students used to do really poor on, and they still do really poor on it. But then we have a retake, and they do a little bit better. And then we do another retake, and they do a little bit better. The first time I had to do those trust problems, when I was learning how to teach this class, I was, I actually was with Amanda Binkley in Baltimore with a bunch of other teachers in Project Lead the Way, and teachers were in tears in the hotel lobby, trying to figure out how to do these trusses. This is what we're asking our students to do, and it's incredible, they can do it, they can rise, but they need that chance, they need those failures and those opportunities to grow. And so I think that's really important to keep in mind. I know that retakes are contentious, but again, come into my classroom and let's talk about it, and let's see what it looks like in action. And then I also think that it's really important to think about the fact that that Level 4 capstone class, where people love and rave about what students are capable of, zero grades. I put zero grades in the book this semester. Three days ago, I had students who were like, they were like, hey, you've got a colon here, and this is a semicolon, you need to change that, we need to change this font, like, what about this word instead of that word? How do we tell our story more clearly? All of that is without grades. I took 20, 22 days, I think, Dr. Conley, because of Teacher of the Year stuff this year, and the sub today, on another sub day when I was over at Odessa, the sub left me a note and said, your students are incredible, and they were all working on their projects. Those seniors who presented today did all that work, zero grades, even when I was not there. And so I think it's just super powerful to think about what we can do. A lot of teachers have shared awesome ideas, and it's super exciting. We can help get our students there. It's going to take some growing pains, but we're going to get there. Thank you, and I would love to answer any questions.
I have a question for Dr. Burrow. So I know we've been doing this for two years. Are other districts doing this as well?
So currently in our state, other districts are not doing this work at the secondary level.
Can I just jump in? I just, first, I wanted to thank all the teachers for being here. You know, a little bit of, maybe in a response to what Mr. Forston was saying, you know, a lot of the times, we're hearing the negative because that's what we all do kind of as humans, but, you know, these are 15 or 16, we have some folks in the audience too, who just wanted to be here to support. You know, these are, these are some of the folks who are actually doing it and seeing it. And you see that it's not all positive, there's things that we're still working on, but we don't, we don't get to hear that as much. And so we just thought, rather than hearing from me and Dr. Conley for six straight years, seven years, that maybe this would be a lot, a lot better. So I do appreciate all of you and your work that you're doing for the students. I think that's ultimately the thing, is like, it is a benefit, I heard from Ms. McFarland over there, wherever she went. Yeah, yeah, it's a benefit that, you know, it is, some of it is about saving time, but this is about kids, you know? It's about their learning and showing that it really isn't about the grade, it is about learning, you know? So I appreciate that, and we will take questions.
I just, I don't have, I think I've asked all my questions as we went along, but I just wanted to thank all of you. I very much appreciated this conversation, and Michelle and I were just chatting. I felt like this was very transparent, I think you all were very candid. There's a few of you in the room that I would like to follow up with directly, as I took some notes, so I just wanted to thank you all. I've really, really enjoyed this, and Mr. Hafer will be taking you up on your offer, and we'll see you soon.
I just want to echo those comments. Thank you to each and every one of you for taking the time for not only the ways you grow, but the challenges. I think that's important. I think we, I don't want to be the negative. We had to focus on how we take, in here, where, I don't want to say I even get it yet, but we're people who get it, how do we explain to the people who don't get it? And I think in my experience, I've learned that kids are excited about change and adults aren't. And so some of our key stakeholders in this are parents. And so kids are in a classroom on a daily basis with people who are excited about this, so they get excited about it. But how do we engage our parents who bring me questions like, how does this affect my kid's GPA calculation? Will they still be in the top 25? What does this mean for dual enrollment? These are the questions, the emails I'm getting that people want me to bring to a meeting like this. What does it look like for a grade on our report card as a, when we're used to seeing certain things? So I know that when we roll things out, those are parent, I mean, those are real legitimate questions I got from my mom. And as a mom, I might have had those myself with the changes. But that's the other part, like, what are the next steps for that? What does it look like as we continue to get teachers on board and we get kids on board? How do we engage parents? I've joked before about picking up my first report card in the office at the Abiquin Preschool Center. My daughter's kindergarten teacher was out sick, and so we didn't have the opportunity for a conference. And I opened the envelope, and it was all these graves that said Cs and Ds. And I was like, huh! Because you're used to, you know, not, that wasn't it. And Renee Nolan, bless her heart, looked at me and goes, consistent and developing. And I was like, huh! But how do we, how do we make sure that we're explaining to parents for their, not only their first look, but their in-depth look, because they're invested in their children too?
Yeah, my immediate response, that's on hold. My immediate response to that is that, yeah, it starts with communication, and it's got to be clear. So the goal, I don't remember if Mr. Wright was saying this up there, but we want to communicate with our staff and our families shortly after we were waiting for the board workshop. Obviously, we pushed it from January to now. So our goal is to communicate within the next, you know, hopefully the next couple of weeks, send that out to the staff, let them know that the plan is that the full implementation will be 25, 26. That's number one. Let our families know, this is what that looks like. We've constructed, we actually have, part of our work group has created communications for that. So again, these are not, you know, a Nick Hoover communication, this is created from our portfolio work group, a group of people working on that. We want to send that out to families and then continue to communicate that. Ultimately, what we want to do is, because there's a lot of great ideas, once we have our boot camp, after that, what we want to do is finalize things and make it clear. Because most people, they want the concrete. I want it on a piece of paper, here's the five bullets, tell me what it is. And it isn't, it isn't quite like it's going to be five bullets, but make it concrete for people, let them see it. And a lot of our conversations have been around that. The build has been so long, and it's been important that it's been this long, and through Dr. Harrison's work with our teachers, it's the teachers that have been building this, so it's been important to have that build for so long. But it also means along the way, people weren't clear, because it hasn't been clear yet, you know what I mean? And now that we're getting more clear, and then hopefully by the end of the summer, we've got our clear, concrete-ish communication that we can then send out, then we can continue to answer questions and continue professional development, which is the second part of the answer. Then that professional development for our staff goes along with, here's your five bullets. And that's, that's in quotations, it's not really five bullets, I just want to say.
I'm going to hold you to five. The other voice not in the room is our students. I think that we always benefit when we hear from students and how we learn from this. So when we make these presentations to parents in the community, this room is filled with fabulous people. I can look around and many educators that my kids were lucky to have throughout the ages, but they've learned from you, and I've heard them say why, but there have to be other examples of that, like, oh, I realize I retook this and I learned this because of that, and I wouldn't have, I would have just moved on, and I wouldn't have had the concept to build. So that's the other, I think, as we talk to the community, how do we get kids to tell the stories of, this was hard, and this did not work for me this time, but I learned it this way? Because we also don't want kids just to say, this was great, because, you know, there are challenges with kids too, so that would be my only feedback.
We have, we've done focus groups, Mr. Wright and I have done focus groups three times.
Yeah.
The end of last year, we did them in the fall this year, and we've talked to, I don't know the number off the top of my head, it's got to be 200, 250. And almost none of them were repeat students, meaning they had not been, they had not done field testing prior. And, I would say, except for one, we ended up with one overlap, and there were generally positive responses. That's actually one of the reasons why we pulled Mr. Hussey into this conversation, because there was overwhelming conversation around his feedback mechanisms, and a few others just talking about their experiences in classrooms. So we do have feedback from students. And what was really fascinating to us was from the first go-round to the second go-round and even the third, the data mirrored itself. So we saw the same patterns and trends in terms of who was pleased, who was displeased, you know, and gave us feedback in terms of how to modify what we're modifying. So that's been feedback we've given to teachers as well. So we use that for some of the feedback structures in the process. We have not done any focus groups this particular spring, just because of a variety of different factors in terms of availability with Mr. Wright and some other things, because he because he does a lot of the tech piece for me, and I haven't had time either, but that's also on the list to continue. And we really would like to get a parent focus group up and running as well, for those exact reasons. I have a couple of parents already on the list because of conversations I've had, so that we can keep getting that feedback structure in place, because you're right, it is important to have the stakeholders at the table, so you aren't the only one hearing that, hearing the conversation.
And that, that one student that we've happened to grab three times now. And we are randomly pulling teams, he just is lucky or unlucky. The third time he walked in, he's like, oh! Like, the reaction was so great, and he sat down, and I was like, and he's like, I know who you are, you're going to set up a mic, he's like, giving me my spiel, and I was like, yeah, I am, and we're, we're going to talk about it, he's over at Odessa. And he was kind of funny, he's like, I had some real strong opinions last year, and we're like, you absolutely did. And he's like, I've changed some of them, and we're like, okay, he's like, I really want, I was like, don't say the words yet until the mic is turned on. But he actually wound up talking about how he's come around on it, really enjoys the process now that he's in high school versus what he experienced in that very first pilot, which I think was late seventh grade, and then we talked to him in eighth grade and again, ninth grade.
I'll say, the students mirror the parents, generally, they have the same concerns about GPA, they have the same concerns about their general grades, same concerns about sports. You know, it really does mirror what you're hearing, so that in itself is refreshing, because we're not hearing anything new from either side. So at least that still gives us the same target to go after and the same things that we know we need to communicate, from dual enrollment to AP classes to, you know, what the report card looks like, which we're learning with Infinite Campus, so all of those things are ongoing conversations. Which is, again, why we're asking for more time, so we make sure we get it right, because when you're looking at the 15 people in the space, and you're looking at all the other teachers that have been doing what we've asked them to do, and all the other things that we're tagging, it's we want to make sure to get it right, so we can refine it and have a really good product moving forward, because it is a big lift, it is a big lift.
Well, I'll definitely say for those people who aren't in the room, if you could look around this room, you would be very excited. Phenomenal group of people that are currently surrounding us in this weird setup, but yes.
I have one last comment, there are four teachers in the room that my daughter had, my daughter had this year, and I'll have to say, the work that she received, I thought she was already in college, I'm like, Messiah, like, you can do that, she was like, yeah, and I'm like, well, or she may have an issue, I'm like, well, let me just email that teacher. She's like, no, Mom, I got it, they taught us how to do feedback, don't, they want us to communicate to them, so. I want to say kudos to everyone, that's, that's a part of this, I've seen, I mean, I think my daughter's really smart, but when she goes to the different colleges and they interview her, they're very impressed with her skill set and the knowledge that she has, so. But that's a testament to what you all do day in and day out. We can't do it by ourselves as parents, so, so thank you, I see Duncan, I know she loves him, Ms. Morris, she loved you, Ms. Williams, I know she had you. Just a few people, I can't really, I don't know about this, but just thank you for all that you've done, it's tremendous work, so.
So, I liked the opportunity.
Michelle, I couldn't be in the room tonight, and I apologize for not being there, but obviously, I paid attention. People should not interpret my curmudgeon-ness or my as in any way denigrating all the incredible hard work and professionalism that everybody in that room and everybody, as far as I'm concerned, who teaches for our district demonstrates day in and day out. I do think it's appropriate to ask hard questions from time to time, and ultimately, the proof will be in the pudding, and we'll see how this process plays out, but I want to thank everybody, because I know you're all working hard on this, and, and it's all, it's all for the kids, as we say to ourselves on the board every day. I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight, but thank you for the presentation.
So.
Mr. Abrams, did you have any questions?
Can I add one question? Did you say currently you have 60 teachers in the program?
It's over 60 officially, but I don't recall the exact number.
Wait, district teachers doing what? Just, I have a number in my head. Three something?
Secondary.
You keep referencing time, and we keep pushing the start date back and back. If we roll this out in 25, 26, is every physical aspect on paper, is everything done today? We would like to make this announcement, and by the way, I think everything you guys do is fantastic, I'm not getting negative, please. You have said to us prior that you'd ask for more time, because every component is not drawn out, dictated, X, Y, Z. Is that now completed? Is every aspect to roll into next year, so when a student walks through the door, this is their expectation, this is the rubric, this is how we're going to treat the student, start to finish? Every piece has been written and done down on paper, there's nothing left.
I know, that's why they want another year.
But we need more time than that.
No, no, I don't, no, because our goal is to have that work done before the start of the school year.
The school year, this year or?
Twenty, for, like, August, this year, yep, then professional development with our staff, you know, through the year, and then we roll out 25, 26.
So every teacher will have professional development this summer, rolling into next year? Or are you going to roll it out to every teacher in the next summer, 20?
Sorry, so we're going to have our concrete answer to that by the start of 24, 25, so in this August of 2024. Then we do professional development with our teachers. We've already started professional development for this year, but the concreteness of this is what it is, right? Professional development through this year, right? And then that ends in, you know, the school year ends in June of 2025. September or August of 2025 is when we would roll out full implementation.
How many teachers will be doing this next year? Out of the 60, I mean, are we going to double that to have, because you're telling me we're taking roughly 10%, 20% as the base study? So we only have results of the 60 teachers, so are we going to go to 120 teachers to have those results?
It's completely voluntary, so we're not, we're not forcing anybody to, to do this, this is completely voluntary.
Until 2025.
Yeah, I'm sorry, until 2025, right, yes. So I can't answer that right now, I mean, we went from, I mean, Dr. Harrison would know better, but we went from, you know, 15 people to 63 people.
We roughly tripled our count officially, in terms of people actually piloting things from year one to year two. And then that's not including people who are doing things all over the place as it is. There are quite a few people who are doing things unofficially, because they didn't want to be tagged as having to go to extra meetings, having to do extra work, like, they just didn't want to be part of the official anything. But they're still doing work, I mean, I'm going to use Sam as an example, her whole PLC is now doing the work, she's the only one that's an official field tester. But they're all doing the work, so there's three math teachers doing the same thing she's doing for exit tickets.
We have to make sure when we communicate with parents, like, you can say her whole PLC is doing that, but I can guarantee you, the moms I have coffee with aren't going to know what a PLC is, so, I mean, we just have to make, we just have to make sure that we're communicating in a way that's well-received. And then just two things that just came up in my head, if there's, as Mr. Abrams is pointing out, if we don't have all teachers are required to be on board until 2025, 2026, what do we do with the teachers that are the holdouts for that point in time?
Well, all teachers are required to do the professional development that's going to be offered, so training will happen. But in terms of the actual, like, field testing and the other pieces, that's the voluntary piece.
But I mean, like, so 2025 school year starts, and I'm adamant I do not want this in my classroom, then what does that look like?
So that's exactly where I would go.
I mean, my answer is, it's just like coming here and saying, we use this curriculum, and they say, well, I don't want to use that curriculum.
Okay, well, I mean, that is a question that, you know, and then that might impact a kid's learning, because you have someone who, and then I think a pocket of people that will be specifically impacted by that is anybody who has a senior, 2025, 2026, is there in that real joy of the college application process? How that changes, what you're seeing, the report card and the transcript did look like to what it will look like. So anybody who finds themselves, which is actually me, in that group who has a sophomore right now, you'll be transitioning, but as you're trying to communicate your child to someone else, like, and we're changing it as a district, that's going to be a group of parents we're going to need to be extra intentional with.
So for the high school, the high school transcript will not change, high school transcripts are generated based off their report card. Now, the report card will look different, but a high school transcript is not going to change. And if there are any nuances on the high school transcript that do need explanation, whenever we send a transcript to a post-secondary institution, it also is accompanied by our guide sheet that really helps explain to every school, this is what a grade means in Apocanmic, and they, you know, schools have access to our course catalog and all that information, because there are school districts across the country that grade differently, that use standards-based report cards, that, there's an organization called Mastery Transcript, which is like another type of transcript. So because so many districts and states use all different models, post-secondary institutions are used to having to look at a guide sheet of what it looks like, what the high school transcript looks like, and then make decisions based on their system. So we're really confident that if anything, this is, well, we are confident this is going to put our students ahead of the curve when it comes to applications.
And you already see a little bit of that in our state, because when we go to the scholars' dinner, you see some districts are on a 100-point scale, where we're on a four points, some of the other districts are on a four-point scale, so that they're experiencing differences in transcripts even out of our state.
And actually, we've discussed this previously, so I'm going to circle back around again. What is the metrics, the basis that you are assessing the curriculum, so the test, not test scores, everybody has a heart attack over that, and proficiency to the state testing, and where our numbers stand today? And that could be for a follow-up meeting down the road, but I'm still asking the same question that, that's it, just where, we can discuss it later, I'm just, we haven't ever circled back around to that one point in this whole divestation of the curriculum, where is that? Can we circle back around?
Yeah, so I was going to address that, like, kind of my closing remarks, and expand on the question that Michelle asked in regards to, is anyone else in the state doing this? And so you may ask yourself, so why are we doing it if no one else in the state is doing it? And so what we do know, what we do know is that the traditional grading system that all of us went to school with and were probably successful in, and that's why we're here, we do know that that system does not work for all kids. We do know that, that all kids do not experience success in that system. And so when we talk about we're looking to do what's best for all kids, we're looking for something that's going to be best for all kids. Is this going to be a perfect system when we roll it out in September of 2025? Probably not, probably not going to be a perfect system, and it's not going to be because of the work and the time that's been put into this by the people sitting at this table and the people in this room who have done a tremendous amount of work, and I cannot thank you enough for the work that you've done, but it's going to be new. And anytime something new is rolled out, there are going to be some hiccups and challenges that are going to come along with it, and we're going to have to improve upon that, and we're going to have to get better. But again, I'm going to go back, that we know the traditional system, the A-through-F system, is not working for all kids, and it's not, is not having, learning is not happening for all kids, and there's not a way to measure learning that's happening for all kids. And I appreciate Corey's story about George, but there's more than just one George out there in our system and has gone through our system, and I think about it for myself as a teacher, when I was a teacher, how many kids did I fail? Not fail my class, but did I fail by not having a system or things in place for them to be able to learn and measure learning appropriately? So I think you're right, it is a separate conversation norm on, you know, where we are with our test scores and learning and outputs and things like that, but it's not the only, it's not the only factor that's going to go into play.
We just get pounded all monthly, where our test scores at, and they're going to see this, that's just.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think it's a conversation we have to have.
Are there any other questions from the board? Mr. Forston?
I do have one other question, so as we start to walk this out and think about the strategy of how every child will do with this, or every student will do with this, I want to make sure that you don't push everyone, I think the saying goes, no child left behind, like, we want to make sure that even though we give George zero first time, one the second time, three, like, really make sure that mastery is a part of it for those students that care like you all in the room. And for, you know, lack of a better word, you may have some teachers that's not, will never, like, be, be into this, right? And they may just push through, like, just making sure that those push-throughs, or those kids, not, no, no kids left behind, doesn't really get left behind as a result of, you know, teachers not really buying into the portfolio.
Totally understand, totally agree too, yes.
Thank you for your work, thank you.
Matt, do you have anything else?
No, I guess a thank you to the board, which I think was a remiss in, just thank you for allowing us to look at this and to examine, and try to improve what we're doing for kids on, and for outcomes for kids.
That's who we're here for. All right, hearing nothing else, thank you for coming, and good night.